It is now 7:04 and we are going to start the council meeting for Monday, March 7. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You do have a quorum ma'am. Thank you. At this time, we're going to do the invocation from Reverend Matt Kearney from the Evangelist of Transform Nation, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We are also going to do a special prayer as part of this tonight to include the people of Ukraine. Thank you.
Let's bow in prayer. O'er God, we come just as we are. You are a good and gracious God who is slow to anger and abounding in loving kindness. We thank you for that and we welcome you here. And we thank you for those who are doing good in our community, our first responders, our city employees, our school staff, our businesses, our churches, and other nonprofits, and the people of Waukegan who call it home and want to see this city prosper. Lastly, I thank you for those on this city council who sacrificed so much and worked tirelessly not only to run this city, but to see it grow. We humbly ask for your divine wisdom and inspiration to guide their conversations and the decisions they make, especially for policing that both keeps our community safe, but is fair and just for all people of color. Tonight, we ask for your blessing on this city. Give us your hope, your peace, unity, and help this city prosper so that all may be blessed. Our thoughts and prayers are also on the war in Ukraine. We pray especially for the preservation of civilian lives, men, women, and children caught in the crossfire of war. We pray for peace and justice between Russia, Ukraine, and the West. We also remember that there are other wars going on around the world. We pray for peace and justice in Myanmar, Afghanistan, Yemen, Ethiopia, Sudan, Syria, and all military conflicts around the world, big and small. May your peace be realized in our generation. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Kearney. Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the sovereign republic which stands alone nation under vow, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone back to our city council meeting, our first one in March. I'm grateful and happy that we are done with our mask requirements, and it's so nice to see people's faces, so please, we do not have a mandate here at City Hall. It is recommended for anybody who is immune compromised that you do wear a mask, but we do not mandate it. I'm sure most of you are aware that Governor Pritzker has officially removed the mask mandate for indoor public spaces. That said, people entering the public buildings or city buildings are welcome to choose whether they prefer to wear that mask or not. And as always, we ask that if you're not feeling well, please stay at home or use our website, as many city services are available online. Additionally, there have been some changes to the COVID testing site at 102 West Water Street, which is now open on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays only, so please plan any testing accordingly. As a reminder, and some of you have already noticed, city stickers are currently on sale. The early bird reduced rate is available until Thursday, March 31st. You may purchase your stickers online through U.S. Mail or at several currency exchanges throughout Waukegan. A complete list and additional information can be found at tiny, that's T-I-N-Y, URL.com/Waukegan2022, or you can visit our website. In theory, spring is just around the corner, and as hopefully a sign of warmer weather like we had this weekend continues, both the city's special events applications and Waukegan Park District's outdoor rentable space permit applications are now available online. Remember to submit applications and permit requests as soon as possible and well in advance of your event. Remember, for the city, anything under 30 days will not be honored. All outdoor and seasonal events are ready, are already started to be scheduled and people are booking up dates. I want to invite everybody this weekend to come out and support our Waukegan Fire Department hockey team this Saturday, March 12th at 4:00, as they take on the Gurnee Fire Department in a charity benefit, or a charity game benefiting the GLASA, the Great Lakes Adaptive Sports Association. This game will take place at Top Shelf Ice Arena at 4:00 PM, and tickets are available at the door or at the Gurnee Fire Department or Station One here in Waukegan. Please come out and cheer them on because Gurnee often puts in some nice ringers for us, so we need to get all the support we can. You can celebrate St. Patrick's Day at the Ray Bradbury Experience Museum, where they will host the Irish-born guitarist Jim McVeigh and the Bradbury storyteller Ortiz Orwine at Nightshade and Dark at Saturday, March 19th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. The show is open to attendees of all ages, and I'd also encourage you to visit the March Art Walk taking place throughout the downtown area. Additionally, for those of you who are brave, St. Pauldrick's Hair of Hope will be at Greentown Tavern on Sunday, March 20th from 12:00 to 5:00. This organization raises money for childhood cancer research, and you do have to be brave to shave to attend the event or support the worthy cause. I hope to see many of you there, but I will be honest, I'm not shaving my head. At this time, I'm going to hand the floor over to the Waukegan Police Chief, Zupak, for some remarks. And is he, you want to come on up?
Thank you Mayor. Council members, I know you've heard my voice quite a bit tonight, but I want you to know that some of the words I'm going to talk about now are probably the most important thing that I'm going to talk about here tonight. Not that our budget is important, but this is very important. Mayor, council members, and citizens of Waukegan, we're, most of you are all aware of what occurred about 20 days ago. The Waukegan Police Department arrested and incarcerated a 15-year-old juvenile who should not have been incarcerated. We can talk about the things that occurred, some of the things that maybe the police department did good during that investigation, and maybe some of the things that we didn't do so well during that investigation, but the fact remains that a 15-year-old was incarcerated who should not have been incarcerated. I say 15-year-old and a juvenile, and I say that, and I don't say that in disrespect to this young man or this young man's family. By state statute and law, I am actually not allowed to discuss the details of this case in pub, out in public. I also can't reveal his name, though I know most of us already know who his name is. So I, please letting his family know and him know that, I mean no disrespect by not stating his name, but by law, I'm not allowed to say his name. But we all, we all understand and know who we're talking about here. In our media release in regards to this case, I made some comments that the police department must do better, and I fully believe that. I know that we have to do better. We cannot allow this to happen. We have to make sure that a scenario like this does not happen again. I commanded my command staff and many of my upper command staff over the last couple weeks to do a review on this case. And we round tabled this case. Again, we talked about the things that we could have done better, we talked about some of the things that did go well in this case, and we talked about these things as to how can we come up with some solutions so we don't end up in this scenario again. What can we do to prevent this scenario again of a 15-year-old being arrested who shouldn't be arrested? Now, I don't know that I can stand before the council and let the council and members of the public know that I can guarantee that something like this is never going to happen. I'm going to do my best to make sure that something like this never happens, but I don't know that I can give that 100% guarantee. I'm going to try to get as close as possible. So we are starting to take some steps in regards to how we handle juveniles. Starting tomorrow, I'll be issuing two new special orders that will be incorporated into our policy manual. The first special order that I'm going to issue is that the Waukegan Police Department is no longer going to arrest a juvenile out of a school. I think we all know that the juvenile justice system is about rehabilitation. Those juveniles that find themselves in, in the course of not doing the right thing all the time, when they get themselves inside of the juvenile justice system, the court always mandates or wants the juvenile to go to school, to do your homework. That's generally always one of the mandates that we see in a juvenile case. So why would we as the Waukegan Police Department want to continue to take kids out of school? If we need to make an arrest on a student, we will make that arrest outside of school. We prefer and we want them to be in school. Now, I do have SROs that are assigned to schools, and occasionally, an SRO may be in a position where something happens at that school where an arrest may be mandated. In those scenarios, which don't occur very often, but if they do, in this special order, I'm going to request that that officer contact a supervisor. And what I'm asking for is I'm asking for this officer to make a determination whether an arrest should be made out of a school. And then I'm looking for that second layer of approval to say, is this the right thing that we should be doing at that moment in time? But all other related incidents outside of the school, Waukegan Police Officers are no longer going to arrest students in schools. The second policy that will be going out tomorrow is that the Waukegan Police Department, police officers, detectives, from tomorrow going forward, they are no longer going to conduct a juvenile interrogation without a parent, guardian, or an attorney present. That's it. We are not going to be juvenile advocates inside of the room. While state law allows for that to occur, it allows for the police department to be an advocate inside of the room. That's not best practice. That's not the smartest thing to do. We are doing this for a twofold reason. One, to protect the juvenile inside of that room, and two, to protect the police department. The police department is about trying to solve crime. We want that juvenile to have proper advocate representation sitting next to him, their parent, guardian, attorney, whoever. And there, the conversation's been had that, you know, maybe there's some other advocates that could come forward to help out, to fill in in this spot. Listen, when the police department arrests a juvenile, the only way that we release a juvenile generally is to a parent or a guardian. So we have to make contact with them anyways. We're just going to wait to talk to them till those parents are around. I do think, I don't know that again, that is going to give me 100% guarantee that this situation could never happen again. I do hope it limits it. The ability of not taking students out of schools, we want them to be in school, and then for our role back at the police department, I think interrogating juveniles, we need to make sure they are represented inside of that room. I want you all to know that this is not a quick fix solution. We're not issuing a couple policies to just get this over with and be done. These are policies that have been talked about, been talked about at nauseam amongst the police department, with legal counsel, with the mayor. And I think these are good policies that will help everybody, the community and the department in general. But I also know that going forward, there's still some more things that we're going to have to take a look at and consider doing. So while I'm here before you, telling you that we're issuing these two new policies, it, it will not be the last thing that we do. We have further things that we need to do. Mayor and council and city, city members, I appreciate your time and thank you for your time up here.
Thank you Chief Zupak. These have been, these have been extensive conversations that we have had, and what the aldermen will see in the, probably by the next city council meeting is in addition to these two policy changes that will be put forth immediately, you will also see us hiring an outside firm to help us go through our policies and procedures. I think there's been some things that have been very important for us to learn from this, and one being that I believe personally that a child advocate, even though it's legal and has been the way that we've operated, I personally don't believe that a child advocate should be a police officer. So I will do anything I can do legislatively to help change that, because it's important that our children feel safe even when they're at the police station. So we are committed to these changes. You will see some of these changes. Like I said, two of these policies are immediate, and the other one, I think the alderman, you'll be seeing that come forth within the next two weeks. Moving on to other announcements. Many of you have not realized that it is spring, and this Sunday, our clocks move forward by one hour. So you will lose that hour of sleep, and many of us, even though we're seeing snow, are not prepared for that, so I'm just giving you a heads up that happens this Sunday. We will be conducting, the police department will be conducting car checks this weekend, or this, coming up for St. Patrick's Day. So again, St. Patrick's Day is a big celebration day. We expect our bars and restaurants to behave appropriately and not over serve and not serve to minors, so, but the car checks will be happening. The city of Waukegan sends out their deepest condolences to the family of 24-year-old Ashley Crock of Libertyville, really Waukegan. As some of you have read, Ashley died in a deadly car collision at the intersection of Belvedere and River Road. The fatal collision is still under investigation, and anyone with information should call the Waukegan Police Department's Traffic Division at 847-599-2630. Lastly, as many of you know, I'm a very private person, but I wanted to reach out and thank the aldermen and the many people who have reached out to me during the last week over the passing of my father. I didn't think I'd be this emotional, so I apologize. I'm grateful to everyone, and my father was 91 years old. He will be sorely missed, but I wanted to make sure I thanked everybody for their kind words. On that note, we're going to move on to other proclamations and presentations and appointments. Thank you everyone. Okay, can I have a first for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Who second? Who did the second? Aldwin Rivera. To ratify appointment, an appointment to the Waukegan Library Board of Trustees, and that is Mr. Stephen Bug. I think all of you have the resume in front of you. Any questions to the motion? For those of you who don't know, Mr. Bug, he is actually the CEO of the Great Lakes Credit Union here in Waukegan, and he will be joining the library board and replacing Hector Bryant Escobar. And that will happen on March 16th. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you Madam Clerk. Next, I'd like to present a Waukegan Proud Award. Is Julissa Palomo here please? Julissa?
She might be out there.
Okay. Oh, good. Lots of family photos.
All right, we have the Waukegan, city of progress, does hereby present Julissa Palamo this Waukegan Proud Award for this Amazon Process Associate's quick thinking action to administer the Heimlich maneuver on a fellow associate, saving the individual's life on Saturday, February 4th, 2022, presented on March 7th, 2022 by Mayor Ann B. Taylor.
There's a lot, there's a lot of risk encouragement to save somebody's life. And Julia Palomo demonstrated that on February 5th, 2022, a coworker at Amazon Warehouse was eating an apple in the break room and started to choke on it. Julie noticed that, Julie noticed what was happening and quickly rushed over to start doing the Heimlich maneuver. By doing the Heimlich maneuver, she was able to dislodge the apple from her coworker's airway so they could start breathing again. The coworker did not need any medical assistance, so the EMS personnel was not called to the scene. The Heimlich maneuver is the most effective way of relieving a choking victim, and it saves many lives daily. Unfortunately, there are about 5,000 people that die from choking. For people who may not understand what a Heimlich maneuver is, it is a technique used to relieve someone who is choking by performing abdominal thrusts from the back of the person. It is a technique that could only be used for people that are choking. It is not used for people that are having any other type of illnesses. It is not used for anybody that is unresponsive. Julie Palomo has done a remarkable job of saving her coworker's life, and she deserves knowledge for doing so. Let us thank Julie for making this world a better place. Thank you for your time, and consider this an honor for Julie's bravery.
Armour. Are they here tonight? Joanne and Rich? Come on up.
All right. Waukegan, city of progress, does hereby present Joanne and Rich Armour this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your 38 years of successful business at M.E. Uniforms located at 128 North Genesee Street in downtown Waukegan, presented on March 7th, 2022 by Mayor Ann B. Taylor.
Oh yes, I'm waiting for the note. I got my three minutes. You have three minutes, and the first person, you gonna jump David? All right. The first one I have is Mr. Kevin O'Connor.
Evening. Attorney Kevin O'Connor. Several years since I appeared in front of you guys. I am the attorney for a young man who was falsely coerced into a confession by the Waukegan Police Department. I can say his name, because I have the family's permission, that's Martell Williams. So everybody knows in the context, everybody's heard about it. I appeared in front of this council many years ago, and I at that time represented two young men. One was 13 and one was 14, where I said, there's a problem within the police department. The one young man ended up with a bloody nose as a result of that investigation and that interrogation that he was subject to. The juvenile advocate, there was two officers involved. The one officer was investigating the one young man, the other was investigating the other, and they switched off to be the juvenile advocate for the two people. I came in front of this board, and it was not the same people, so you guys get a pass in a sense. It was not, it was a much different board at the time, with different mayor, and several members of the board turned their back on me, turned their face the wall in disrespect, when I offered my services for free to help fix the problem. Just so you know, that's the history that we have, and I didn't come back after that because I really was trying to help and change it. I warned that if this continued, you were going to continue to have a problem within this community, you were going to continue to have a problem within the police department, and that it was only going to escalate and become worse over time. We're here now, there's other instances that I represent people with the city that's not this, but now we're back to the juvenile issue again, where unfortunately, this young man didn't have the ability to fight off the whatever was coming at him and confess to a crime he didn't commit. And if it wasn't for video, or wasn't for the proof that he was at a basketball game at Stevenson High School, our own state's attorney here met with the family and told him if he was at home playing video games with no witnesses, he probably would have spent 10 to 20 years in jail. That is a scary proposition for anybody that has children, anybody that's been through this. So I come here with a heavy heart because the city's ignored me previously, but I come here with a positive attitude too, because I've met with the mayor, I've met with the new police chief, and I feel like there is a, a sense that there could be real change going on. It doesn't happen without all of you. I hope we can work together to make that change. Again, I volunteer my services to do that, not only with this case, because I think some of the changes that the police chief have raised are very good. They, they help remedy some of these problems immediately, without having lawsuits, without having all of these things.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you.
Okay. I wish to work with you, and I hope you work with me as well.
Clyde McLemore.
Good evening. I'm Clyde McLemore, Executive Director of Black Lives Matter. First of all, I want to give my condolences to the mayor and passing of your father. I know what you're going through. I just went through with my mom, you know, I mean, and I'm still going through, so I know what you're going through. Just incident that happened with Mr. Williams was very unfortunate, like Attorney Kevin O'Connor said. Had he been, just at home taking a nap, got tired from school on a Friday, went home and went to bed. He would still be in jail right now. There was no way to prove it. Even when I got the call, I said, "He signed a confession. He need a lawyer. He don't need a Black Lives Matter." You know, I, I agree with Chief Zupac with some of his changes. Sounds good, but I disagree, I, I, I disagree with the one thing about going to get outside people to come in. We did that before. I think Alderman Mozzio, you was on the council when we, we brought in outside people, and they told us what was going on in that police department. We even brought in the DOJ, and they did the review, and it's still happening. So we need, I, I don't know what we need to do, but it, it needs to work, you know. We don't need to keep getting told what's wrong. We need to find out how to get it right. You know, I am a father. I have an 18-year-old, and if that had been him, I'd have been pulling this little hair out of my head because I wouldn't have known what to do. You know, it was, would make it so bad if the kid is a really good kid, but he's suffering now because now he's scared of the police. You know, this is a really good kid. This kid was playing basketball. You know, he, he got a future ahead of him. You know, it's not one of them that's out here doing nothing. You know, he was at, he was at Stevenson. The police work wasn't done, and I just have to say that. I have to say that. I watched the video because I didn't come to the last city council member, and I saw some activists come up here on the stage and did not want to mention this little boy or what's going on. So I'm going to say this here. It wasn't right, which we all know it wasn't right. Mayor, you did make a comment to the press. Chief, you made a comment to the press, but we need more than comments. We, we, we don't need our children, and then just because this was a black child, it could have happened to a white child. It could have happened to a Latino child, you know, and that's.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Margaret Carrasco.
Yes, good evening. As long as we're talking about the police department, I begin with a filed request that I received on February 25th, in which employee number 2560, a police officer is listed as residing in the state of Texas. Mayor, we need police officers on, boots on the street, not Zoom from Texas, okay? Next thing is that last meeting, I picked this card up in the lobby, and it says the building commissioner is Michael Patel. I think we need to take the time to destroy all of his business cards because obviously he's been gone, long gone for a long time, and, you know, anyone that picks it up has the wrong information. The next thing via a filed request, in which I requested all of the licensed contractors, and then I asked for the building department, what are the approved contractors on the list? We have costless renovation. William Isagiri listed on here. He's not on the list that the city provided to me, so how could it be that he is approved to do city work? Lastly, another contractor, this is from the check run, on September 17th, are you aware? We paid this contractor three times. And another contractor, and I'll bring that detailed information, we issued a $40,000 check in December, and when I requested all the detailed paperwork for it, what did he do for $40,000 in the police department? The response was, there was nothing. We can't afford paying people once, twice, whatever the case is, if they did not do the work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Norma Rose Mandi.
Okay, first time with so many people. Sorry. So, yeah, the Mexican Latina woman of Waukegan would like to congratulate Waukegan Mayor Ann Taylor for being recognized as one of the women who went Class 2022 during Women History Month. And the Latina community are proud of you as mayor, and congratulations. And I hope this year, Women Honored Construction Company, let me, I do landscaping, and I hope I have opportunity here. And last year, I applied, but my applications were denied. So, yeah, that's it. Sorry. I was just like, oh, a little bit nervous here. Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, not you.
Okay.
Too soon. You're close, but Brother Blanks is next.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. The last time I was here, Mayor, I did, but first and foremost, condolences on the loss of your dad, you know. So I've lost both my parents, so I know the feeling on that. But the last time I addressed the city council meeting, I spoke on the basis of the issue of police and student contact. I mentioned a few names, like previously, as I mentioned, Jonathan Garcia, Georgio Perez, who Mr. O'Connor alluded to earlier in that history, Parrish Bank Kids, and these are just some of the student and police contact that just did not end up in a good way. The mayor made a suggestion, and I know some of the officials was against the consideration of the outside or an independent view for a chief. And I just want to reiterate, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think when we've had a pattern and a practice that we have, real change is good. I think what Mr. the intern, the intern chief Zupac, the policies that he's proposed, I think they're good, but I think they would be better and best enforced by someone who can be objective, who can be more, that is not beholden to patterns of the past. So when we go outside and we consider someone outside, that means we're considering some fresh start from the top down to enforce and to hold those policies in place, which the intern chief mentioned. So I am here to reiterate a change at the top, an outside, objective view. I'm not saying you even have to hire him, but I just think it's worth considering to look at a outside, an outside chief and to do that nationwide search for a chief, and that give a broader scope and possibilities of what we can have as a new chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Mr. Rotaka.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Robert T. Rotaka on behalf of Abiza. Mayor, as you know, there is an order this morning for a suspension of Abiza. I'm before you this evening to articulate the position. I understand where the council's coming from. I understand where the mayor is coming from in wanting to instill certain policies under a new regime, but I'm here before you to tell you that if this suspension is in effect, forget the fine, the suspension, Abiza will be closed. Now, when you look at Waukegan and someone who's had a family that's owned a business here for now 40 years, there is a group of people through Abiza that want Waukegan to prosper. You heard from different people this evening, they all have a common wish, and that's for the best of Waukegan. And where it starts is supporting businesses, supporting our families, and supporting our police. I do all of those things. On a daily basis, I might do criminal defense, but I work with the Waukegan police. I work with business owners, being a business owner myself, right on County Street. I'm asking you to reconsider your decision. If it's a fine that you impose, fine, they'll pay the fine. If it's a policy concerning their security, they'll fix it. But putting a suspension for more than 30 days during the COVID era does not matter. They will go under, and when they go under, it'll look like the rest of County Street vacant and empty. I'm asking for an oral motion for the suspension to be uplifted and allow Abiza this Friday to be open. That is contingent on, on the fine, and that would be contingent on the security plan that I've already tendered to you. I've spoken to your corporate counsel. I've spoken with Brian Smith over email. Maybe my mitigation isn't getting through as far as what I've presented. Licensing, they have it. Security, they have it. Insurance, they have it. Support from Waukegan is what they lack. Maybe a year in business, does not matter. They could go elsewhere, and they could say, you know what, we tried with Waukegan. We're not going to have our business here. And it's not only just the fact that it serves alcohol and, and food. There's other business opportunities here. There's a lakefront. There's a growing casino. People that want to put their mind into building Waukegan, it starts with one business and it grows to another. If you continue to have a suspension based on these type of allegations, you're deterring the fact that anybody would want to build a business in Waukegan. And again, on an oral motion, I'm asking that the suspension, this, for this Friday, allow Abiza.
Thank you, Mr. Rotaka. That concludes the audience time, ma'am. Okay, consent agenda. Can I have a first for the consent agenda? Alderman Newsome, a second. Alderman Hayes. Any questions to anything on the consent agenda?
Please.
Okay.
I have, I'd like to pull out item C for discussion, please.
Okay.
Ma'am.
They cleared it up.
Okay, so item C will be pulled out, so we will be doing a consent on item A, B, D, and E. Any questions to those motions? Okay, item A, motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the proper city officials to sell via online auction conducted by Ornith Auction Services Incorporated surplus vehicles. Item B, motion to approve vendor payments dated March 7th, 2021, in the total amount of $3,72421.79. Mayor, that should be 2022. Oh, yes, it is. We wrote that wrong on the agenda for you. We're sorry. Item D, motion to approve regular payroll dated February 25th, 2022, in the total amount of $1,631,844.57. Item E, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD, holiday payback, and comp time cash out, retro pay, final payments dated February 25th, 2022, in the total amount of $64,123.67. Can I have a roll call, please? Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item C, questions. Alderman Turner.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So reading the attached material, the actual applications for both, there's two applications to conduct raffles, and it's something we've talked about in the past. I know I brought it to attention to the council in the past, and that is, in both those applications, it asks if there is a surety bond. And you folks may remember when Bob Long was our attorney, I asked him, "What does that mean?" He said, "I don't know," and then he came back to us and explained to it, explained to us that the surety bond absolves or covers the city of any liability in the event that the operator of that raffle might run off with the money or something. Right? So we wouldn't be, you know, if they came after us, we, they'd have, the applicant has the surety bond to cover that potential loss, right? So on the application, we have that question. Is there a surety bond? And on each application, it says waiver request. Two words, waiver request. There's no further attachment that suggests a rationale for the request or any other documents, just simply two words. When we previously discussed this, I suggested that if we are not going to enforce having a surety bond, that we should remove that question from the application because by default, I mean, nobody ever has a surety bond, so why even ask if we're just going to be pro forma to grant or allow waiving of that, that requirement? So I would, I would ask that we stipulate that that either be removed from the application or enforced or waived. Enforcement first. Enforce it, waive it, have a process to waive it, or take it off the application altogether. Because I can't vote to pass a raffle request simply because they, they stated, vaguely state that there is a waiver request, which there is none.
Your Honor, I would say just get rid of it. We don't need to be messing around with this. This is over in governance, and you know my position on it. It's over governance. It's a silly state law they passed, I don't know many higher years. Anytime anybody wants a raffle, you got to come to the local municipality. I get it. If somebody runs off with the raffle money, there's a, there's a process for it. It's across the street.
Yeah.
We don't need to be messing around with this.
I agree.
Get rid of it. It should be a rubber stamp. Approve, approve, approve. We don't should be messing around with surety bonds and all this and that and the other thing.
Totally agree, Alderman.
Sillyness.
Mr. Attorney, Stu Weiss, would now be an appropriate time to make a motion to remove that question from the application? How, how, how can we proceed with that administratively?
What I, what I would need to look at is if a code amendment is, if a code amendment is necessary, I am looking at the state act, and the, what it says is the local licensing authority has the ability to waive the, the bond requirement. And to Alderman Mozzio's point, the State Raffles Act is a very, very old act and doesn't take into account a lot of modern developments, including online raffle sales and things like that. So what we can do is we can take that direction, and we can probably bring a code amendment back to you at a subsequent meeting.
All right, great. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, I have, I also have a question about one of them. So the one for the church, I forget. So again, and I brought this up in another application before, and again, it's, the aggregate value of all prizes is 1,000, but the maximum value of each prize is 1,200. That's impossible because aggregate means total combined, right?
Yeah.
So how can the total be 1,000 if the maximum is 1,200? I, I don't think people understand how to fill this form out.
I don't, good, yeah, probably not. Again, it's over, it's, it's, good Lord.
So I think we should split these out separately for a vote?
No, I mean.
I, okay, if I can make a suggestion, I would suggest let's move forward on these, and then as indicated by Stewart, is that we need to change the application, period.
Correct.
I mean, we need to just update the application so it's understandable, but I would propose that we move forward with these for now so we don't hold them up.
Who reviews these before they come to us?
Licensing.
So can we ask them to make sure that these numbers make sense before they present it to us? it to us, so we can just automatically approve them?
That's why I don't-
I would say making the changes to the application would probably solve all of these issues.
I mean, are we really going to send the police over to the raffle at the church and say, you can't have a raffle?
Yeah.
No, we're not.
No, but if I'm approving something, I want it to make sense, and this doesn't make sense.
And get rid of it.
It's a legal document.
I can't do that, Greg. The state does it.
Well, we can make it simpler.
And you're the first one to complain if we're going to get sued over something.
We're not.
So, I would prefer to do this the right way.
I agree.
Well, what we will do, how about if we vote for these raffles to continue, so we're not harming anybody doing a raffle, but we will change our paperwork and come back in a code amendment?
That makes sense.
Sounds good.
Roll call, please. I think I need a first and a second.
I'll first. I'll second it.
Who's first? First was Alderman Rivera. Second was Alderman Mozio, I believe, right?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Reports and communication. The treasurer, welcome back. Look at him looking good after surgery.
Thank you, Mary and City Council. A citizen recently brought to my attention a clerical error in the annual treasury report. The front page's dates were correct, 2020 and 2021. The information in the report is correct. One of the pages in the report stated 2019, 2020 was a clerical error. I read over it, and I didn't catch it. It has been corrected and has been refiled. I'm working on a revision of the treasures report with our finance city attorney, Mr. Weiss. I'd hope to have, to bring this to you tonight, but a lot of energy is being put into the casino, as it should be. Hoping to have this revision next month.
Thank you.
So, my report.
Thank you.
There being no old business, onto new business. Is there anyone that would like to take these as an omnibus?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, second.
I'd like to pull out item E.
Item E, okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
Just real quick, I just want to make sure if we're taking them as omnibus, it includes the amendments to the code-
Yes.
-that we discussed.
Yes. So, let me double check and make sure I have this listed correctly. So, when we get to item E, what we will be reading is as amended.
Right.
Okay.
I think this is the one with-
I don't know if Alderman Turner wants to know, Alderman Turner, I don't know if you were here when we went over it in committee. We fixed the garbage bin language.
Can you explain to me what the fix was?
We explained it to be out of public view, instead of designating it had to be in back, just because, I think we all know, we have people that have them on the side of their house out of view.
Yeah.
I think the whole emphasis of your ordinance was, we just don't want people leaving them in their front yard all week and/or on their drive, you know. I have plenty of people that have them back on their side, by their side door. We just changed it out of view, and I think our building commissioner can communicate to the code enforcement, let's not be busting up, you know, old lady Mrs. Smith because it's right next to her back door, and it's 40 degrees out, and, you know, so.
All right, thank you, Alderman Mozio. With that, ma'am, I would like to remove my objection.
Okay.
Put it back in the omnibus.
So, we also amended item A, so that the islands include curves.
Oh, you know what? I'm glad you made it. Item A.
That was, that was an item A on here.
Landscaping.
No, it's item A on the code revisions.
Oh, I see, okay. So, that's the one pertaining to the parking lot.
Yes.
Correct.
Beautification, right? So, I'd like to discuss that. Thank you for bringing it.
Okay.
So, my understanding is that applies to any new parking lots that go in or existing parking lots, they have to have landscaping and such and so forth.
If we're going to talk, if we're going to discuss that, that should be pulled out separately, and then-
Okay. Then I retain my, well, I want to pull that one out.
Oh, it's not on the agenda. Okay, sorry. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, with that said, you're okay with item E?
Smart. Thank you.
Okay.
Always save money.
So, we're okay with item E? Okay.
Yes.
To make a motion for the omnibus, we have a first by Alderman Mozio. Can I have a second? Alderman Hayes. Okay. Item A. Motion to approve a second temporary extension of an intergovernment agreement with the College of Lake County for the use of Madison Street Mall. This matter was heard before the Community Development Committee on March 7, 2022. Item B. A motion to adopt an ordinance disconnecting certain territory continuous to the city of Waukegan. This matter was heard before the Community Development on March 7, 2022. Item C. A motion to waive competitive bidding and authorize the proper city officials to purchase six 2022 Ford Explorer Police Pursuit SUVs from Terries Ford in Piattone, Illinois, with a total price not to exceed $256,000. Payment for the vehicles will be made from the line item 205-1205-26493. This matter was heard before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on March 7, 2022. I do just want to let the audience know that the reason for the waiving of the competitive bid is, as many of you know, cars are very hard to get right now. So, this was a situation where we could actually get those vehicles. Item D. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to order and purchase 15 2022 Ford Explorer Police Pursuit SUVs under the state bid through Curry Ford in Frankfurt, Illinois, with a total price not to exceed $508,605. Payment for the vehicles will be made from line item 205-1205-26493 in fiscal year 2223. This matter was heard before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on March 7, 2022. Item E. A motion to authorize, or a motion to approve an ordinance comprehensively amending sections of the city's building code. This matter was heard before the Code Revisions Appeals and Negotiations Committee on February 22, 2022. Item F. A motion to adopt an ordinance repealing various sections of Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinance regarding domestic animal licenses. This matter was heard before the Code Revisions Appeals and Negotiations Committee on February 22, 2022. What that means is that we will not be collecting for dog licenses. All you will get the bill for is city stickers, but not for dog licenses. Any questions to any of these? Roll call, please. Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, closing items, Alderman time. Alderman Hayes.
Thank you. I'll pass my time for the evening.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to say, first of all, thanks to our police department in full disclosure, and owning up to their errors and mistakes. And I had said on the last previous meeting that I really encourage full disclosure as a city when it comes to cases like this. And I understand that the family has reviewed the tape, and I just think that we, I'm thankful that we're, you know, being more accountable as a city and correcting our mistakes and owning them. And then I want to give condolences to our mayor and loss of your father. And also, I recently, in the past few days, myself lost a best friend and her husband, who were killed in Chicago. The husband and wife, that was on the news. And also condolences to all throughout the city during this time. And just want to let you know where you are in my prayers. And then also want to make you all aware that every first Thursday at 9:00 a.m., there is a faith-based meeting. All clergy and community members, you are invited. We have breakfast, and the breakfast is pretty good. And then we talk about how to link and collaborate our church community with the city. So, I just want to make you aware of that every Thursday, first Thursday of the month. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Seager.
Yes.
Alderman Mozio.
Yeah, just one quick thing. I'm going to read something here. It pertains, well, you don't understand it. Eighty-five percent of the reason for failure are deficiencies in the system and processes rather than the employee. The role of management is to change the process rather than badger individuals to do better, as by Edward Demming. If you want to know more about Edward Demming, he's a good Google. But my mindset has always been that you need to change the system. The system is the problem. That can be any system you're part of, the justice system, the city system. Look at the system first before you attack the individuals in the system. That's what we need to do first. Look at the system. Here, definitely across the street, definitely at Springfield, but look at the system first. It's easy to blame individuals. It's easy. Everybody likes to blame somebody. It's because it's easy. Blame the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. My condolences go to the mayor for the transition of your father and all those other families who have lost loved ones. Mayor, I've asked several times regarding the redrawing of the ward maps, if it's going to occur. You say that Corporation Council was working on it. At our next meeting, I'd like to know where we are with that. Also, certainly we know it's Women's Month, and certainly we have history here being made with Mayor Taylor being the first female mayor of the city of Waukegan. And certainly, there are a lot of other women that have done trailblazing efforts, and we need to make sure we recognize that. I see some of the things going out on Facebook regarding police department and other areas. Also, I've stated several times, as we're preparing the budget, we need to make sure that we increase our police department. Boots on the ground. I came here in 1975, and we had many more police officers under the first subanja. We need to increase that. We also need to make sure that we look at trying to get individuals who are from Waukegan. There's enough males and females that can be encouraged to apply and get through the arduous task of being a Waukegan police officer. Also, Mayor, we approved about Hawthorne Strategies. I'd like to have a report on exactly what does Hawthorne Strategies do for us. I know it's a public relations, but I'd like to know that we're paying them $9,000 a month in three-month increments. I'd like to know what they're doing, and how has it helped the city of Waukegan? So, I'd like to have that report. So, they've been paid, what did they do? How did it help the city grow? Did we get anything as a result of that? Also, on June 25, I want you to mark your calendars, and this is in the process of doing a day where we will bring in individuals who will take our electronic devices, will do the shred day with the papers, will also do the unused medications. And that will be in the sheriff's parking lot on Martin Luther King Drive. We're shoring that up now, and that'll be from 8:30, 11:30, so please mark your calendars, and we're going to get all the agencies around Waukegan and the county to be involved in that. Also, I want to encourage those individuals who are planning block parties to get your application in early. As you heard tonight about if it's less than 30 days, it won't be approved with the weather changing, get it in early so that it won't be denied. Also, with Earth Day coming up, we'll be putting out dumpsters. Other person who's in charge of that has asked each of the Aldermen to designate a particular area, and I'll get that information to Alderman Florian. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Newsome.
Yes.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Rataca is here, and he made a plea before his council regarding that Ibiza and their suspension of their operating or liquor license for, I thought it said 22 days, I suppose that was 22 calendar days, which would, or business days, which would equate to over, in excess of 30 calendar days?
No, it's 23 days, ending on March 13, which total going back to the original, the closure date is 23 days total.
Right. You know, I sat through that hearing, and, you know, it was very, there was a lot of information that was presented. But in light of Mr. Rataca's observation, you know, I'm thinking about it as he spoke, you know, that is pretty hefty. I think he had two $7,500 fines, or some such, it's a very steep fine, in addition to 33 days out of business. That seems a bit excessive, because as I recall that hearing, there was only, the only thing that was directly tied to that incident, to the visa, was the lack of, they weren't really good at checking IDs, right? So, maybe there was some-
There were, I can give you a copy of the final order if you'd like to see. We have copies of the final order if you'd like to see the whole, the whole record of it, but-
If you can email it to me, but for tonight, I'd just like to maybe have some discussion around his request. Again, regardless, it sounds extensive, I mean, that's-
But you need to read the order first, because what you're quoting is wrong.
Okay.
So, read the order first, and then we can address that, but you need to read the entire order.
I will read that order. And then can we talk about it at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Remind, remind the audience, listening audience and folks in throughout the city, city stickers are on sale now. They're still $40 at the early bird rate. And then, in the sixth ward, I want to thank the police department and public works. There's something Chief Wallace and I started working on way back, and I mentioned it before, the radar sign that we put up eastbound traffic on Glen Flora, or in 700 block of Glen Flora in front of the, I think it's the Dollar General store. That kind of slows traffic. I mean, it makes a great impact. It was an immediate impact. Even as we were there, kind of taking pictures, photo op for the sign, we could see the impact, and the cars were slowing down when they saw that radar sign. So, I'm glad we're able to get that done. Chief, I would like, if possible, to draw some data, maybe in a month or so, and see how effective it was. And I do intend to meet at some point in not distant future with Superintendent and LaBaron Moten over at the school district, and identify some other school zones where might benefit from a similar sign, as well as, we're going to continue to pursue or work on our pilot project for speed humps, and I think I want to try those in school zones as well. And then, I've spoken with all the Aldermen, I think Alderman Kirkwood, I don't think I spoke with you about it, and I apologize, but I'd like to make a motion, if it's appropriate here and now, to have an honorary street name for my esteemed predecessor, Alderman Larry Tempest, who served as Alderman in the sixth ward for 43 years, as well as his contributions to the city of Waukegan over those more than 43 years as a wrestling coach, as well as a driving instructor. He was a mentor to innumerable young men. He was my mentor, and though he and I had a very acrimonious relationship in the beginning, we were actually like at each other's throats a couple of times back in 2003, 2007, but we became fast friends. He became a mentor to me. Mr. Tempest is becoming aged, and his 87th birthday is April 28. I would very much like for this council, these Aldermen, and our mayor, this administration, to extend the honor- to extend the honor of renaming or honorary name, street name for Hickory Street between Glen Flora and Golf Road. That would be about six blocks of honorary name sake for Alderman Tempest. And that's my formal motion. If I could have a second?
You can't, you can't put it on this agenda. We can put it on the next agenda for you.
Do I need a motion to put it on the next agenda? How does that work, Stuart?
If you, if you'd like, if you'd like to do that.
I would like to make a motion and I'll make a motion to put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, and that can be done by voice vote.
I'd definitely second that, obviously.
Okay. Can we have a voice vote, Mayor?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate you. Great, thank you. That's what I have for the sixth ward. Thank you all very much.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, my condolences to all the families that have lost a loved one, specifically to our mayor, Mayor Taylor, condolences. I want to thank everyone who participated in audience time. Lots of good communication, lots of good information. And together, that's how changes occur. Reminder to spring ahead, as it was mentioned earlier. Also, and it will be mentioned after I mention it, but the sprint cleaning is occurring the week of April 18th through April 22nd, April 22nd being Earth Day. A reminder to everyone, please, city stickers, that's coming up pretty soon. After, after May, they will be ticketing. So please get your city stickers. Also be mindful of alternate parking. And I wanted to commend Acting Chief Zupac for the changes and for his leadership. Sincerely appreciate it. Thank you very much. And one last thing, I wanted to congratulate Stephen Bug for his appointment to the public library. And want to thank him in advance for his service. And pretty much that's all I had. Thank you all for coming and God bless.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I too join my comrades here in wishing my condolences to the mayor and her family in the loss of her father. I know that's not an easy thing to go through. I also want to thank Chief Zupac for the two changes he announced tonight. I think that's a step in the right direction for sure. Him and I had a short conversation about at least one of these orders. And I appreciate the fact that you jumped on the opportunity to make a change immediately. So thank you for that. And as Alderman Rivera talked about, Earth Week, as we're calling it, is coming up, the 18th through the 22nd. We are going to have dumpsters in each ward at one point during that week. So first and second ward will be Monday. Third and fourth ward Tuesday. Fifth and sixth ward Wednesday. Seventh and eighth Thursday and ninth ward on Friday. I'm still getting the locations. I'm working on that, Chris. I got, I got several of them, but I'm still waiting for a final. But I'll get that to you soon. So you'll have the locations of where they're going to be. We are excited about this. We're hoping that not only do we get the city cleaned up that week, but we change behavior. That's what we really want. We hope someday this is something we don't have to do. We can just say, oh, once upon a time, we had to tell people not to litter, you know, and now we don't anymore. So hopefully that's something that happens. There is going to be a nonprofit, I don't know, what do you call it, Mayor? Symposium, meeting?
We're just having a meeting with nonprofits this Thursday at 10 o'clock.
Right, here in City Hall. So David Motley was kind enough to help put together a little presentation for me to give to them as well as the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, which is happening at noon on Thursday. So we're hoping to get the churches involved, the schools involved, really get like a whole citywide support for this. So thank you for that and I look forward to that happening. Now, the last thing, I know everybody's so excited about not wearing masks anymore and I get that, but I read a really interesting article and it's very short. Even a mild COVID case leaves people with a much higher risk of many kinds of heart problems and stroke for at least a year, a new study suggests. Researchers examined the rates of cardiovascular issues among 153,000 COVID patients who were treated at the Department of Veterans Affairs before vaccines were available. So this is not a small study, 153,000 people. Compared with people who hadn't had the virus, the patients had more heart muscle inflammation, heart rhythm irregularities and potentially fatal blood clots in the lungs and legs. They had a 72% higher risk of heart failure, a 63% higher risk of heart attack and a 52% greater chance of a stroke. Okay, you get 72 heart rate, heart failure, 63 heart attack, 52% stroke. Strikingly, the effect was the same across all demographics regardless of the severity of the patient's bout with COVID. So that means even a mild case. Younger adults, older adults, black people, white people, people with obesity and those without. Everybody. The risk was everywhere. He warns the damage will last for a lifetime. The study didn't examine whether being vaccinated lowers the risk, but doctors suspect it might. Steve Nissen, a cardiologist at the Cleveland Clinic, says the vast majority of COVID patients he has treated for heart problems were unvaccinated. This disease is not over yet, people, and it's not just a cold. I hate when I keep hearing people say, well, we're going to have to learn to live with it because it's just like a cold. You just heard this, just about the heart. I also know there's problems with kidney disease and other things. So, okay, I'm done with my soapbox, but I just want to say it's not over yet. Please still be vigilant, be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Alderman time, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Mozzio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.